Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your patience this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. Today is Tuesday, April 9th, and the board meeting was called to order at 4:30 today, with the board going directly into executive session under the following ORS. ORS 192.6602K to consider matters relating to school safety or a plan that responds to safety threats made towards the school. It is now 6:15 PM, and we're reconvening with the public session, which this evening is a business session. We have board members Inojos Pressey and Lisa Harnish, Cynthia Richardson, joining us via Zoom this evening. And Director Chundergory is the only absent. Okay, just want to make sure everyone's back on there. We'll go ahead and move forward with our land acknowledgement. Sorry, it feels a little empty over here. But folks had prior arrangements, so we are gonna do good. All right, we're gathered today on the land of the Kalapuya, who are represented by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederate tribes of the Soletz Indians. Their relationship between the Kalapuya people and this land continues unbroken to this day. And we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people. With that, we'll stand and for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic where it stands, one nation, undebowled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any agenda modifications, Superintendent?
No, we do not.
Great. And I'll hand it over to Superintendent Castañeda for my favorite portion of the agenda.
I think it is everybody's favorite portion of the agenda. So we are going to do our spotlight, and we're gonna do one mass spotlight before we move to our normal spotlight. And our mass spotlight is our assistant principals. So it is, I think, obvious to everyone who spends time in schools that every member of the team is important, and we get a few moments to recognize all those folks. Today is our day to recognize assistant principals, who are, in many cases, people who are checking in with students every day, helping lead, helping schedule, supporting. And also, they are our future principals. So to all of our assistant principals out there, we just wanna be grateful, be celebratory, and acknowledge all of your contributions. All right, so now we'll move on to the actual spotlight portion. And what I'd like to do is actually invite Stephen Lyle to the podium, and we will ask you to honor our first spotlight and let us know all the wonderful things that are happening. And I'll emcee one quick thing. We're getting better at this every month. We will, after the spotlights are over, we'll meet you over there for photos and for certificates.
Good evening, Chair Guzman Ortiz, Board Directors, and Student Advisors. Tonight, I would like to recognize a very special organization who has given so much support to our students and community. The Children's Theater Foundation has spent generations providing opportunities to the children in our community to learn about themselves through the theater arts. Children's Theater Foundation has an especially impactful partnership with our district through the Ulmer Collins Event, an annual enrichment workshop named for two significant Salem Kaiser theater educators, Tom Ulmer and Ken Collins, that serves students from each of our six traditional high schools through a day-long workshop for theater students and their teachers. During this one-day event, students receive valuable instruction from theater professionals from Oregon colleges, universities, and professional groups, including hands-on technical training for play production. Salem Kaiser theater teachers are given the opportunity to network with professionals and to collaborate with each other to gain skills in building successful theater programs. The Children's Theater Foundation has reached the end of its journey as an organization, having spent the past 43 years in helping students find their voice through theater arts. Upon dissolving, the foundation transferred the remaining funds to our Salem Kaiser Music and Drama Program Office to support the continuation of the Ulmer Collins Event, which is coming up this May. I'd like to take an opportunity on behalf of Salem Kaiser Schools and our entire community to say thank you to the amazing individuals at Children's Theater Foundation, including Sherri Ulmer and Mary Bodikheimer, and on behalf of them and all the founders and board members of the organization for the support you've given our students, teachers, and community for many years. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all of that. Can you imagine all those years of theater? Joy for students and joy for the family members and the community members watching. So we will now also move on to our staff spotlight. And I would like to ask Stephanie Wessel to join us. And she's the Director of Early Childhood Education. And you'll tell us more about who we're honoring.
Good evening, Chair Guzman Ortiz.
Sorry to interrupt. You don't have to press it because it's hot this time.
Oh, never mind. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Guzman Ortiz, Board Directors, Student Advisors, and Superintendent Castañeda. I'm joined tonight by Erin Alquist. Erin is a licensed mental health therapist who serves as our school counselor for our Salem Kaiser Early Childhood Programs, Students and Families. Erin works to creatively meet student needs. This includes providing PCIT, parent-child interaction therapy to pre-K students and their families. PCIT is an evidence-based treatment for young children with behavioral and social emotional needs. It's conducted through coaching sessions, during which the caregiver and their child are in a playroom while the therapist is in an observation room watching interactions through a one-way mirror and live video feed. Erin provides in-the-moment coaching on skills for families who are learning how to manage their child's behavior. This valuable service increases students' skills and abilities to participate successfully, both in the home and in the classroom. Erin was also nominated for a 2023 Crystal Apple Award, and that speaks volumes about the importance of the work that she does, as well as how valued she is to our program and to our families. Thank you to Erin for your contribution to students and families in our community, and we are so grateful for the service.
You'll see the person with the big camera. That's our signal that we're gonna meet over here and take some photos.
Are we doing two groups?
Yeah.
Thank you once more for joining us and for all of the work that you do for children, families, and our community. We are going to take a quick five-minute recess for some technology pieces, so we'll reconvene at 6:30 unless those persist. Great, welcome back, everyone. Thanks for your patience. We are having issues streaming audio to our, the live YouTube streaming. So we're gonna move forward as is, but provide a recording once that's available and the CCTV team continues to work on the audio. We just want to make sure to preserve time this evening to get through the agenda. All right, we'll go ahead and pick up where we left off, which is Superintendent's report. And off to you.
Thank you. Given our delays tonight, I'm actually going to skip Superintendent's report, and we'll move right on to the next agenda item.
Okay. Which actually is moving over to introduce the Community Bond Oversight Committee Chair, Mark Shipman, to provide us with the 2023 CBOC report, which you can also find in the Written Documents section of Board Packages, and those are available also on the website. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Guzman Ortiz and fellow board members. My name is Mark Shipman. I am one of the co-chairs of the Community Bond Oversight Committee, known as CBOC. I'm here this evening to briefly talk to you about the CBOC Annual Report for the 2023 calendar year. And it's really hard to believe that it's been six years ago that our community approved a $619.7 million bond to fund the school expansion and renovations. As noted in the background summary of the report, the bond focused on four elements: expansion of CTE and science spaces, adding space to relieve overcrowding, increasing safety and security, and protecting the longevity of our public investments. On the first page of the report, it refreshes your recollection as to the identities of the committee members, the school board liaison, and the dates we met in 2023. More importantly, on page two, in 2023, that was the fifth year of construction under the 2018 bond, and we identified the program's successes in the starting of construction of renovations to seven different elementary schools and the substantial completion of more than 18 different elementary, middle, and high schools. The project confirms challenges that our construction management team faced with delays in procuring equipment, materials, having to adjust schedules, and order materials well in advance of scheduled start dates. It's interesting to note that at the end of 2023, the district had utilized more than 97% of the total bond funds. That's just staggering. Meaning, we have approximately $26 million left in uncommitted funds for the remaining projects. These funds will be sufficient to complete the remaining base bond projects, leaving a small portion for short list of high-priority items identified through the bond program. In closing, what has made this bond so successful has been the financial aptitude, flexibility, risk mitigation of your staff and the entire construction team for the school district. Not only have they managed this bond project in a successful manner, they expanded it through the strategic pursuit of grant awards, the timing of bond releases, and chasing reimbursements as available, all without expanding the planned tax burden to our community. They're the ones that should be congratulated. Thank you very much. That's our report for 2023.
Thank you so much. I do want to invite Bob Silva, our Chief Operations Officer, to provide a few words, I think. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Mark for coming in and presenting tonight. He is one of three co-chairs. So I'd also like to recognize Nancy McMorris-Addix, who isn't here, as well as Director Harnish, who has submitted her resignation from the co-chair. We thank you for your six years of service to CBOC and hope you'll continue to join us as a board liaison now, because your input has been invaluable during that time. I'd also like to recognize Joel and his team, who do a tremendous amount of work preparing for the CBOC Committee meeting every quarter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just want to echo the appreciation, and it's been wonderful to visit our schools and see the work, the improvement, and to see children, students just enjoying really the environment and the atmosphere. So it's been years and a huge community effort. So thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We'll go ahead and transition into public comment at this time. We will continue to allot the 30 minutes that we have. And again, selected at random, we have the screen available for the timer, which goes from three minutes to 30 seconds to one second, and it'll go red, orange, yellow. We do ask folks to please be mindful of interpreters this evening, both our Spanish-language interpreters and our ASL interpreters. Also want to note that the board does receive written comment ahead of the board meeting. So we've received that. And we have a list of about 12 people today, so I'm just gonna go through the list. The mic is on. And so first, I have Sir. Sir from Luce, and then followed by Leslie Marshall.
My name is Sir. I'm 10th grade at Salem Kaiser School District. I am here because I want to express my disappointment at our school district for wanting to install weapon detectors. As a student in this district, I know that they will not work. I got to see the weapon detectors in person, and I can't imagine how this district will ensure they work if they will not be installed at every single door of every school. What if metal detectors are put at some doors, but then students are allowed to go play outside for lunch? Does this mean that we then turn our schools into prisons so that they do work? It seems like a false solution to a problem that requires work for caring perspective. Weapon detectors will also disrupt the education of all other students by creating long lines to enter our own schools. Years of research have proven that weapon detectors result in thousands of hours lost in our education. Metal detectors, the Angeles Unified School District, resulted in 4,000 hours of education lost every year. You should know that installing metal detectors is a racist solution to gun violence. Black and brown students will not only be targeted more by surges, but we will also face the consequences of having less resources available to support us in times of crisis. Although you will not admit it, we know you see black and brown youth as dangerous. You do not want to see our pain, our trauma, or our needs. If we want to stop gun violence, we need more preventative resources. This means smaller classrooms, more black and brown teachers that understand our culture, more nurses, counselors, and addiction services, more arts and music programs, more self-care spaces, like after-school drop-ins with counselors that we can relate to. As a student that has struggled in my education, metal detectors will make it a lot harder for me to go to school. So I hope you make the right decision and fund my education, not the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline.
Thank you, Sir. Do we have the timer running? Or is it because we have... Oh, okay. Just want to make sure we're welcome. Thanks, Leslie. And then after Leslie, we will have Alexia Vazquez.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Marshall, and I am a parent leader of the Salem Kaiser Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, or SEPA. Over the last two years, I've worked with the district to improve the education experience for my child and children like mine. I have heard from several parent voices, and I'm here today to share some of those stories. There are currently 6,800 children attending the district who are on IEP. Despite increasing... Excuse me. Despite decreasing enrollment numbers, the IEP population is one that continues to grow. Their needs range from minimal support to requiring the aid of multiple highly-trained individuals. This care team is the core of their success, and although not all are public-facing roles, their contribution to our children's education experience is paramount. I am here today to emphasize their impact so that as you face the difficult decisions of workforce reduction for the coming years, you keep this fragile population in mind. Families and children with disabilities are at their limit with impacts of COVID and the economic challenges. Support for high needs are slowly disappearing from our community. The district has done its best to step up and serve our children using minimal resources available, and they're doing a fantastic job. But we cannot face any more losses. The student service team, special education teachers, and all supporting roles make up the backbone to our children's success and our support. It makes no sense to decrease the number of staff and programs that support your only growing population. All of these children have a right to free and public education that meets the needs, and you cannot deliver that on a skeletal staff of support. My heart breaks for the parents that cannot work, cannot sleep, cannot function due to the unsurmountable amount of worry for the things that most take for granted. Will my child go to school? Will they stay in school? Are they experiencing trauma? If I have been in trouble now, what's it gonna look like when they're older? What will happen if they hurt someone? What will happen if they get suspended, expelled? What if they're being bullied? Are they safe and are they happy? Our children matter. Every goal they achieve matter, and the impact they make to our families and our community matter. There are no losers when you approach a decision through an equitable lens. Everybody wins. The students themselves, those that have the opportunity to impact their lives and the community they learn to give back to, all benefit from the success of our students. I urge you to preserve what little resources are currently available because we cannot lose any educators, instructional assistants, speech pathologists, behavior specialists, program managers, school psychologists, unified programs, or any other roles or programs that support our children. The current bandwidth is not sufficient. Any reduction would cause a critical impact that will be felt across our community for years. These students are our hearts, and we will continue to be their voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Alexia Vazquez, are you with us? All right. And then we'll have Angelica Lagos-Vazquez.
Hi, my name is Alexia. I am a sophomore, and I'm here today because I do not agree with the school district putting metal detectors in schools because it would drastically increase attendance and take time out of teaching time. Personally, I think metal detectors are pointless and a waste of time. Also, black and brown youth would get targeted more and feel more uncomfortable, anxious, and criminalized. Instead of putting money in metal detectors, we need to focus on things that our school needs to help students, for example, nurses. One time, I sprained my wrist at school, and nobody could help me because there was no certified nurses. I have a question for you guys. How different would our schools look if administration would focus on students' physical and mental health instead of metal detectors and criminalizing kids? We need bilingual counselors, therapy, and more money on programs that actually help. We don't need more kids going through the school-to-prison pipeline. I hope you all listen and do not put those harmful devices that don't even work and cost more than $60,000 per doors in our schools.
Thank you, Alexia. Angelica, and then we have Alex S. afterwards. Bienvenida.
Buenas noches. Superintendente Castañeda, miembros de la Mesa Directiva Escolar y miembros del gabinete. Mi nombre es Angelica Lagos-Vazquez, y he sido miembro del grupo de liderazgo de padres de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser durante los últimos seis años. Nuestro grupo de liderazgo de padres seguía por los valores morales de nuestra comunidad. Cada mes de mayo durante los últimos 25 años, nuestra coalición de padres ha abogado ante el comité de presupuesto a la Mesa Directiva Escolar por presupuestos escolares más equitativos para ayudar a la educación de nuestros hijos y nietos. No hemos tenido mucho éxito con estas anteriores administraciones. Estamos extremadamente preocupados por los valores que pueden estar guiados por las escuelas públicas de Salem Kaiser a considerar donde realizan los recortes presupuestarios. Nuestra historia nos dice que cada vez que hay recortes presupuestarios en los programas, esto afecta de manera desproporcionada a nuestras escuelas del noroeste de Salem y a nuestros estudiantes de color. Nos tomó 20 años de abogacía para tener más una escuela de lenguaje dual y nuestros vecindarios del noroeste de Salem. Ahora que finalmente tenemos varias escuelas de lenguaje dual, queremos que prosperen y no que pierdamos nuestros maestros bilingues bicultural. Asistentes de maestros, consejeros, especialistas en salud mental bilingüe-bicultural. Queremos que la perspectiva de equidad impulse sus decisiones para mantener a nuestros maestros persona bilingüe-bicultural que representan a nuestra población estudiantil. Hemos esperado demasiado para que se aplique la equidad en todos los aspectos de la selección de los recortes presupuestarios que realiza nuestra Mesa Directiva Escolar en mayo. Necesitamos que consideren que todos nuestros estudiantes deben de estar a nivel de grado lectura, escritura, y matemáticas. Que deben mejorar la preparación académica de nuestros estudiantes de secundaria para que estos estén capacitados para la universidad. Superintendente Castañeda, miembros del gabinete, queremos que todos sepan que estamos aquí como sus socios. Queremos trabajar juntos con ustedes y con los directores maestros de las escuelas para que todos juntos nuestros niños tengan la misma oportunidad académica que otros niños de la comunidad acomodada. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, Angelica. Alex S. Adelante, and then we have Chris from... This is Chris Luce.
Can you all hear me? Hi, my name is Alex. I'm a former student from North Salem High School who graduated in the year 2023. I'm here to present a letter that I believe the superintendent and many of the school board members have received. It's a letter on behalf of not only students in the Salem Kaiser School District, but members of Luce also and community members. The letter is kind of long, which you all... Like I said, some of you all have. So I'm just gonna summarize a bit of it, but it's just explaining the reasoning why we don't need metal detectors in our schools and the importance of the actual preventative that we really need in our schools as students, as community members, as longtime community members who worked with students in the Salem Kaiser School District. And I'll share just some of the folks who signed on to the letter standing in solidarity and supporting the youth on their decision on saying no to metal detectors. So groups called Alianza Poder, Mano a Mano, FHDC, which is farmworker housing, Pecun, SKCE, and also Capaces. And this is why it's really important to also listen to the youth here today, right? Many of these students attend your schools, your zones, and I think that they're sharing their opinions. And I think that oftentimes, they are left out of the conversation. Not many of times do they get the opportunity to share their experiences, not only their experiences, experiences, but their points of why our school district needs to listen to them. We know metal detectors don't work. There's a lot of data out there. I think the only data that's being shared is pretty much the data that is good, and I think it's pretty harmful that the board and superintendent are sharing this information to our communities and feeding them misinformation of that. This is a preventative, because this is what a lot of our community thinks, that this is a preventative from gun violence. It doesn't. We also are not addressing the other issues of suicide, right? That's a really big issue too, and I think that's often left out of the conversation. We know the metal detectors keep students away, especially those who make up pretty majority of our school district, right? We know that there is a high majority of Latinx students, black students, Pacific Islander students, native students, and we know that this creates a harmful environment for them, and we know we are going to push them out of our schools, so it's a wrong decision to make. We also know it's a money pit. We're losing about $70,000, $70 million. We're already underfunded by $100 million, so now we're going to be underfunded by $170 million. So I think that's something to really think about. Our students are hurting, and we have no room to do any testing on them either, whether this works out in the long term. We know they need supports like mental health. Karina works in, you know, social services, so I know that you also have that background. I know Ashley also ran on the background of ending the school-to-prison deportation pipeline, and that's what creates that environment also. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Chris, and then True Smith.
Hi, my name is Christopher. I'm 16 years old, and I attend North Salem High School. And like many of the other students here, I'm here to talk to you why metal detectors shouldn't be in schools. Personally, for me and for a lot of people I know, we feel like it shouldn't be in schools because it could cause rifts between people, because I know for a fact I'm not bringing weapons to school. My friends aren't, but we don't know who could. You know, it makes it feel like we aren't safe in our own schools because of the fact that, you know, board members, oh, board members need to put these in. So instead of putting a lot of money into metal detectors, we feel like it should be put into stuff like, you know, the students for like, you know, more like teachers and counselors that can, we can feel like we can build a bond with, so it makes us want to go to school more. So we feel like we have connections there with other people. And for like, you know, counselors, school supplies, arts programs or sports programs, and a lot of the food there, it's like, because some students are like, you know, they're like vegetarians, they're vegans, and they can't eat that stuff. But that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. True, and then Carlos Ventura. Welcome.
Good evening. I want to start off by thanking you for the opportunity to speak here tonight in this institution representative of the values that our country is based off of, and for me and others tonight to have the opportunity to speak about our desires and concerns. My name is True Smith, and I'm an involved junior at Westham High School. And my school, the education it provides me, and the community built through the hours participating in extracurriculars is extremely important to me. And last month, all of that was thrown, when discussions about a potential teacher strike that would shut down schools and extracurriculars was brought up. I'm extremely grateful that both parties were able to reach a tentative agreement. Yet these negotiations brought up questions about how representative student opinions are in decision-making process. I wanted to hear what others had to say about the strike, so I implemented a district-wide surveys in the days before the negotiations that led to the strike to hear what other students thought, and I'm presenting the results today. In the short time period, we received 167 responses with students from every Salem Kaiser High School. The majority of the students were from Westham High School, because that's where my story influenced greatly impacted. The first question measured perceived student awareness of the striking negotiations taking place, and the results revealed that over 80% of students rated themselves at three or higher on a scale of one to five of awareness of negotiations. These students were still aware and concerned about what was taking place, despite none of them actually being involved. The next question was a drop-down menu allowing students to select any questions, concerns that they might have if a potential strike took place. The greatest concerns were in-person instructional time, AP exam preparation, athletics, extracurriculars, and adding more days to the end of the school year. I heard even more of these concerns in my classes, yet students didn't have an avenue to express them. The next questions measured their concerns on the effects of academic life and extracurriculars. And surprisingly, many of these students placed themselves at a three or lower regarding academics, and many students placed themselves at a one regarding extracurriculars. Students still had policy issues that was important to them, which was measured in the next question. Out of the multiple select menu, students primarily placed higher importance on class size, FTE, staff shortages, and teachers' prep periods and workdays. As well as being concerned about teachers' employment conditions, students also more directly identified themselves with SCIA views. When students were asked to rate themselves on a scale of one to five, nearly 50% of students ranked themselves as a one, meaning that they strongly identified with SCIA views. Thankfully, students with concerns like mine were relieved once a tentative agreement was reached, but the questions brought up about the negotiation process still remain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, True. Thanks for that recap. We have Carlos Ventura and then Aracely Garcia.
Hello, can you hear me? All right. Hello, my name is Carlos. I'm a freshman at McHale High School. I'm here to speak on how the Salem Kaiser School District historically has never used funding on getting to the root cause, inequities that affect BIPOC students. But historically, they've always taken the easy way out by inciting fear, by criminalizing youth of color. This always means militarization of schools, schools that are primarily black and brown. Superintendent Castaneda, you spoke on adding metal detectors to high schools and middle schools. Unless you are adding weapon detectors on every entrance and exit, you are playing security theater with parents and students. It is honestly, it is not honestly to say this is even a layered approach to keep schools safe. McHale High School has more than six entrances and exits. The cheapest weapon detector is $18,000. That's not including the staff that needs to be trained to use it. Weapon detectors are expensive and do not keep students safe. Director Ashley and Director Karina, we need funding to be invested in the root cause, BIPOC students, and parents need you to be educated on the statistics and facts. Lying to the community and saying this is a layered answer is not why you were elected for. The data shows schools with weapon detectors have less graduation rate, less than 60%. We already have a low graduation rate, and we don't need to keep pushing our students out of the schools and lowering their chances of being successful. And ways to combat that is better funding on majority black and brown schools with better lunches, spaces for students to hang out, and teachers and counselors of color to make our schools welcoming to our students. We need to end the culture of allowing students to be policed and pushed into the school-to-prison pipeline. And you all need to start caring about our well-being as students and start with not ignoring impacted students when they are sharing their stories and how the weapon detectors will not better or keep our students safe. Thank you for listening, and I hope you all take what me and my peers said when it comes to making decisions for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Aracely Garcia, and then Ellen Bernal Lagos.
My name is Aracely. My name is Aracely. I am a student in Salem Kaiser School District. I am here to talk about where our school money should go to. I believe that using school fundings on metal detectors will have bad impacts on our education. Metal detectors are bad because they can make us be late to class. They also make us feel less welcome. I want the fundings to be used to hire more teachers of color. Having more teachers of color who understand us will help black and brown students feel more safe in schools. We also need small classrooms, which means hiring more school staff. We need our teachers to get to know the students. Small classrooms means students can get to know each other. This will help us with our mental health and stop fights from happening. We need our schools to spend more money on real stuff, not benefits that only make us feel welcome.
Thank you, gracias. Ellen?
Can you hear me?
Adelante.
Hola, mi nombre es Yeseña.
Can you get the microphone? 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 A ver, sí. Y lo puedes bajar tantito. Ahí está.
Hola, mi nombre es Yeseña Aopi. Voy a estar traduciendo por Aracely en español. Estoy en el grado siete. Hoy aquí estoy porque quiero hablar de los detectores de metales. Yo no quiero que estén en mi escuela porque se va a sentir como una cárcel. Las escuelas necesitan más consejeras, clases con menos estudiantes, y maestras que no sean racistas. Estos detectores nada más nos estresarán y nos quitarán tiempo de nuestra educación. Señora Karina, por favor piense como trabajadora social y piense en los niños latinos y afroamericanos.
Gracias. Ellen. Aracely. Ellen Bernal, cierto? Okay, gracias.
Good evening. President Guzmán Ortiz, Superintendent Castañeda, members of the board. My name is Helen Bernal, and I attend the dual-language program at North Salem High School. As a student in the Salem Kaiser School District, I am very aware of budget cuts and the potential impact they may have on my education. Both my peers and I want to complete our high school education in the dual-language program without cuts to Spanish-speaking teachers or programs. Attending a dual-language program has been a tremendous opportunity. Not only do we learn Spanish, but we also celebrate our culture, which makes us feel like we belong and that we are valued. In this program, we are learning advanced Spanish. This is going to greatly affect us in our careers and allow us to include this powerful skill in our college and job applications. Research shows that bilingual students perform better in college, and colleges give preference to bilingual students during the acceptance process. Being bilingual benefits all students. In addition, I would like to point out that an article in the online KGW8 stated that at Salem Kaiser Public Schools, 48 of students were chronically absent last school year. Reducing any Spanish bilingual/bicultural teacher and staff will make absenteeism worse. With 45% of students attending the district from Latino-Spanish-speaking families, we need teachers who speak our language and understand who we are. I know you are already aware of these facts. Tonight, I am asking you to safeguard funding to ensure that we have our bilingual teachers and bilingual staff in our schools. Please do not eliminate dual-language programs so that students like me can benefit from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. And I'm gonna lean in for just the last comment here for Kimberly Reed Zaber.
Good evening, Salem Kaiser School Board, student representatives, Chair Guzmán Ortiz, superintendent, and our board directors. I'm Kimberly Reed Zaber, she/her. I'm a dual-language science teacher at Parish Middle School. I'm a union worker, and I'm speaking as an individual. When I was little, before I left for school, my mom told me two things every day. First, she told me, remember who you are, and I still try to do that. Her second reminder was, listen to your teachers. So now I'm going to pass on her wisdom. Salem Kaiser Public Schools, it's time to listen to your teachers. Your teachers are trained professionals. We know what both we and our students need, so when you are thinking about new policies, new programs, new practices that impact students, listen to your teachers. Listen to your students. If you needed to put a roof on your house, but you didn't know how to do it, or you haven't done the work in 15 years and your knowledge is out of date, then you hire someone who knows. You consult with them about what's needed. You don't hire an expert roofer and then stand on the ladder and tell her what to do. You listen to your expert, so listen to your teachers. Listen to your teachers when we tell you that our staff needs appropriate training for each teacher's area of practice. Don't just say, yeah, well, what we really need is the same building-wide training for everyone. Listen to your teachers when we tell you that our students need wraparound mental health supports. Don't just say, what we really need here is metal detectors in every school. In a time of budget cuts, it's more crucial now than ever that you listen to your experts. Our business is educating and caring for students. If services are going to be cut, those decisions should not be made in the absence of educators. They should not be made in the absence of the students or their community. Consult your professionals. Ask us what we need most. Ask what is most important for us to do our job and serve our students. Ask us what programs and supports are most crucial to student success. Don't just sit in an office far from schools, surrounded by noneducators, and choose what you think is best in your view. You've heard from the community now for general direction. You just heard from some of the very people that we serve. So now Salem Kaiser, it's time to listen to your teachers.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our public comments section, but just really want to appreciate everyone for your time and for stepping in this evening to share your thoughts and feedback. We'll go ahead and do a five-minute quick break. Do we? I'm just gonna do five quick minutes so that we can transition. I know that we're a little tight on time because of tech, so we'll be back at 7:20. We'll ease back into our action items portion of the agenda. This is where all the fun stuff is gathered for this evening, so this first one's really exciting, I'll say. We're really, really excited and just pleased to bring forward this next item, which is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement for 2023 and through 2025 between Salem Kaiser School District 24J and Salem Kaiser Education Association. I know this was a long time in the making, a long time of collaboration and dialogue, so really excited to have this this evening, but I'll hand it over to Superintendent Castañeda for some comments, and then we'll hear from John as well.
Yes, absolutely. First of all, I'm just so happy to be in this moment, and I see so many people in the bargaining team who I got to spend many hours.
So first, you guys, if you remember about a year ago, a little bit less, the state school fund was still in flux. And so the adopted budget was based on a 9-9 budget. And then by the end of the last session, it had gone up to a 10-2. When we've been sharing budget information with you all in the community over the course of the last eight months, it's been based on the 10-2, which is the accurate number. But what we do need to do is update the budget book to reflect the final state aid of 10-2. So that's one of the big changes. And then the other most significant change is that with the resolution of both collective bargaining agreements now, we have to bring forward changes in our expenses that reflect the new rates of pay and the one-time payments. And so just as a brief reminder, when the budget was adopted last year, they were both adopted with the expectation of a 2.5% COLA. And that is not, by the end of bargaining, that's not where we ended up. So these changes updated allow us to run our entire payroll system within appropriations, which we currently are, and with these changes will be able to do. I will pause there and see if there's any questions.
All right, no questions.
I know.
Director Inosprese, it's really hard to see your tiny hand.
Yeah, no, I get it. That's why I spoke up.
Wait, pause. We can't hear you. I think we need volume on the screen. I thought you couldn't hear the bells earlier.
Can you hear me now?
Nope, we can't hear you.
Okay.
We'll let you know. Anyone else have questions in the meantime?
Lisa, can you hear me?
Oh, okay. Let's try that again, although now your camera is frozen.
Oh, it's, I mean, as long as something comes through.
Okay, we hear you and we can see you. Go ahead.
I was just wondering if we would get an updated budget document alongside this.
An updated budget book?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, as soon as this is approved, we'll publish the revised budget book on the website and can certainly provide you guys copies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Or I can try.
Okay, you can go.
Okay. I, I, I motion to adopt the resolution and the budget. Thank you.
All right, do you have a second?
A second.
All right, and Director Carson Cunningham, seconds. Any, I guess that's discussion, any further discussion on this item? All right. With that, we'll go ahead and everyone in favor of approving or adopting the resolution number 202324-5 with the supplemental budget and appropriations for fiscal year 2023, please raise your hand and state aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous for everyone present. Thank you. And then we move on to the Declaration of Budget Committee Position Vacancy, which is the final action item this evening. As we are aware, on April 1st, 2023, the Salem Kaiser Public Schools Board Leadership and Superintendent and Legal Counsel were notified via email that Budget Committee member Lisa Harnish resigned her position on the Budget Committee effective March 12 due to her election on, as a board member. And so per Oregon law, the first action on the board is to declare a vacancy on the Budget Committee and appoint a new member to fill that vacancy. That new committee member will be appointed to fill the position through June 30th, 2026, which would have been the end of Ms. Harnish elected three-year term. I just want to say, Dr. Harnish, thanks for all your work and service on that as well. I know you had to submit a couple resignations given your new role on the board. But do we have a motion for this, to declare this vacancy? All right, Director Carson Cunningham.
I so move. I so move.
As a first and.
Second.
All right, and Director Hudson, seconds this one. Do we have discussion on this item? I do want to ask around, so we announced the vacancy and then have to take additional motion at a future date to, for next steps, is that correct?
You, you declare the vacancy now through this motion and then you go through the normal steps.
Of.
Fill in with.
Okay. So nothing else until, okay, until we appoint. Yeah, okay. Thank you, just wanted to make sure that we had clarification on that. All right, well, with that, then we go ahead and declare the vacancy. All those in favor of declaring of Budget Committee Position Vacancy, please raise your hand and state aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, it's unanimous for everyone there. And we'll move over to readings and discussions. I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Olga Kopp to provide us with information about several first readings and curriculum adoption, so please.
Thank you so much. Director Guzman Ortiz, board members, student advisor, Superintendent Castañeda. I am very excited to bring you today actually five first reads of adoption materials that have been through a pretty rigorous process that our teachers participate in. And I want to mention that Director Hudson has been part of some of these meetings, just like Director Inosprese was part of the ones that I shared with you before. So today we're going to talk about English Language Arts, and this is for high school, and it also includes AP Literature and AP Language Arts. So it has three levels of materials that are really important for our students in high school and our teachers. Then we're going to talk about math for middle school, and we'll talk about newcomer ELD. Remember, we have newcomer programs in middle school and also into high schools. And it's important to have materials that are relevant and that are well done, so they're inclusive of all the cultures and languages that our students that are just coming into our system bring with them. So I'll, I'll share all of that information. If we go to the next slide, please. I want to start by reviewing with you the timeline and the process. If you remember, in fall of 2022, we start by looking at what the state provides as resources that have been vetted by them. And then we start thinking of dates to gather people together who are the best representatives of each of the school for each of these areas. And then in winter of 2023, that takes some time of a lot of research that our program associates do, also with voices of teachers in the classrooms. Then in winter of 2023, we formed committees for each of these, each of these sections that I shared at the very beginning and that I'll share in a minute. In spring, we start evaluating the materials. Are the offerings that the state has what our students need based on the population, based on culture and languages of our students? Is that what our kids need? And then we start kind of dwindling down from the list that is provided to what is something that we want to try in schools. In fall of 2023, we selected the materials and then we chose schools to pilot. And so there at the bottom of the screen, you'll see a lot of middle and high schools that raised their hands and said, I want to pilot these materials and see how they work with my students. Then in winter of 2024, we continue piloting. And then at this time, we bring in the community. We have the materials in different locations. We send notices to families and we start gathering information from parents, from community members, from students, and then of course, from the teachers that are using them. Then in spring of 2024, which happened just last week, we get together and we go over the data. They look at what are the comments from families, what are the comments from students, what are the, what's the feedback from teachers that are using the curriculum? And then there's a lot of discussion and at the end, a vote. And based on that vote, we have these recommendations for your first read of this action item. So I'll go to the next slide. And I'll start with telling you about high school ELA adoption recommendation. We have the selected curriculum resources from Bedford, Freeman, and Worth. And you will see in there the different grade levels for Foundations of Language, Advanced Language and Literacy, Literature, and American Literature and Rhetoric. The top three reasons for selection is that the texts were very diverse and were very well-written, were culturally relevant. Teachers could see that our students can see themselves in the stories that are in these textbooks. There's a lot of insightful teacher prompts and teachers want a material, you're healed, you will hear this throughout, they want material that gives them enough guidance but also gives them some liberty for them to supplement, depending on what their students need. And they felt like this material provided that for them. And then there's engaging content. In this case, they chose this material also because there are no consumables. They felt like they didn't need all the student workbooks that sometimes some curriculums have because they wanted more student conversation, more hands-on, they wanted the, the materials that are online, and they feel that that's more applicable to the students that they're serving right now. So this was the, the vote we have for high school ELA adoption on all of those three levels, again, for core instruction and then for the advanced classes. Okay, thank you. If we go to our next one is Math Adoption Recommendation, and this is for middle school. And the curriculum recommended was core curriculum, but mid-school, by mid-school math. This is going to be, if approved by you, implemented in the fall in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Something important that I, that I want to say is about 1985 was the last time we looked at curriculum for high school literacy and literature. So when teachers were saying, we haven't had materials for all these years, and they are the ones that make it up, they do the research, they have to use their prep time to find the best resources. So there was a lot of good energy and positive energy in that room, knowing that this is high-quality material that they'll be implementing. And then math curriculum was last adopted in 2006 for middle school. So it's also a change that they were really expecting and excited to see. The top three, three reasons for this election, opportunities for high student engagement. We know that good materials give students opportunities to talk, explain, justify, and share their thinking around a mathematical problem or a question, and they felt like this curriculum provides those opportunities. routines for collaboration and disclosure, like I just explained, and then that the lessons again are adaptable and flexible, that teachers could follow the curriculum as it's written, but at the same time, it gives them the opportunity to supplement depending on the needs of their students. And our last one is our newcomer ELD adoption recommendation, and this one has been interesting. Director Inosprese will tell you too. She was at the first meeting where we looked at the data and teachers voted no for two materials that they reviewed, and they asked the program associates, please go back out and find something that fits our student population better. An example they gave us is, there's, as you know, we have a lot of student refugees that come from Africa, and there were lots of stories about safaris. And the teacher said, our students don't have that experience. We want more real-life experiences. And so this curriculum that they chose has a lot of stories about migration and about changing countries and changing cultures and adapting to new communities. And so they felt like these students could see themselves in stories that are represented in this curriculum. This curriculum has three levels, emerging 1A, 1B, and 2, and these are just levels of proficiency. And then the reasons are, again, relevant and relatable to the students that we serve and to the students that are moving into our district that we're happy to receive and welcome into our district. It addresses all language domains and with embedded vocabulary and grammar practices. So if students are being asked to listen, speak, read, and write, there, those are, remember, the four domains that we assess also through the state and the district, and that are very important as we develop as language learners. There are many tools under each of those domains that only support students' scaffolds for access to language. And then it includes, in this case, they did want the consumables. They wanted kids to have practice, they wanted kids to take things home so they can share with family. Sometimes the whole family is exposed to the language, exposed to English. So in this case, for this group of teachers, it was really important that there were some consumables and workbooks that students could take home. And then we had a unanimous vote on these two. So those are the three recommendations. And for newcomer in ELD, we've had zero materials in the past. We have bot resources here and there, but never a formal adoption. So again, I'll wait, see if Director Hudson wants to share a little bit, but the excitement in the room from the teachers that finally have something that they can use for instruction is something that we feel pretty proud to be able to offer now. I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much. This is the first reading, so we're open to discussion. If folks have questions or comments. I have too many. Does anyone else have questions? No, jump in. Okay. Yeah. I don't know which way to go with it. I have so many, I'm so sorry. Okay, first, I think I'll address public questions that arose. So I was wondering if you don't mind reiterating the, the grant funds that this comes from specifically for this purpose? And my understanding was that we do have to continue and keep these updated so often. So I don't know if you want to speak to that really quick so they can hear you.
Yes, I can, absolutely. These, all of these materials are purchased from a specific funding allocation called asset replacement. And these are funds that we have to put away to do, to buy curriculum, to put materials in front of students. The Oregon Department of Education has rules around when schools adopt materials. And we are in a really tight schedule, and actually Superintendent Castañeda and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction just had a recent meeting with ODE that I couldn't attend at that time. But to update them in the schedule that we are going to follow for the next five years on the adoptions that are required by the state. So that's a funding source, and then it's a requirement that we have materials in front of our kids that are research-based and that are also, that go also through a process of vetting from the state.
Thank you. And I wanted to just express my gratitude again because I really, really, really do enjoy being a part of that. I, you already know that, not everyone else, but that any opportunity I have for any of the curriculum adoption stuff, and well, anything, I guess, in general, that the district is doing, I appreciate all the work and I like to see the behind the scenes. So it's, it's been very nice and to be able to go ahead and get around and spend time with teachers as well and see their feedback. So I was, I would like to see more workbooks for all of it, and that's what I had heard a little bit of background. So hopefully in the future, we maybe eventually will, for more subjects, but also, I also hope to have more options from ODE going through the experience because it seemed a bit, some of it was filtered, and so they had to choose from certain options. And so if eventually, I don't know, Oregon as a whole, if we could develop an ability to have more teacher feedback, reach maybe ODE so that they can start with the options. So maybe it would be more efficient and go a little quicker with, with that. But yeah, I was very thankful, it was a very neat experience. So again, thank you, thank you again. Thank you, Chrissy. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. I, I did want to clarify, the newcomer English Language Development curriculum, is this also a, is this a state requirement now? You said there was no former curriculum, so this is a.
They require ELD, but they have given us options just in the past two years. So there's really not a lot. And, and the reality is that nationwide, there's not a lot of curriculum that has been developed for ELD or dual-language instruction. So that's why it took us a little bit longer, and the requirement is for ELD, for English Language Development. We just wanted something specific for our newcomer centers because of the number of students that we have in these centers.
Okay, thank you, thanks for that context. All right, and you'll come back for a second reading, so we'll hear more. I wasn't sure if Dr. Harnish had a question. No, okay, all right. Thank you so much, Deputy Superintendent Kopp. We'll go ahead and then move over to Chief Operations Officer Bob Silva to provide a first reading on the Transportation Supplemental Plan.
Yes, good evening, Chair Guzman Ortiz, Superintendent Castañeda, Directors and Student Advisors. Tonight, we present a first reading on our 2024 Transportation Supplemental Plan. This is an annual report that we submit, or annual plan that we submit to ODE. As part of the state statute, we are required to provide school transportation to students that live outside of a defined radius, one mile for elementary and one and a half miles for secondary. However, they also identify that there are certain health and safety needs where we need to provide transportation to students that live within that radius. So the proper way to get that approved by ODE is to submit a supplemental plan annually that identifies those health and safety needs. In this case, due to some improvements that have been made in three specific areas of the school district by local cities and counties, we're able to reduce the number of hazards that exist for our students to walk to school. So those are in Scott Elementary School, Sumter Elementary School, and Crossler Middle School. So those are the three changes that are updated in this plan to, again, remove hazards that no longer exist based on the criteria we use for evaluation.
Thank you so much. Bob, do we have questions on this item? All right, well, we'll look forward to the second reading, and thanks for centering student safety in this process as well. All right, consent calendar. Superintendent, is there anything that you want to cover in the consent calendar at this time?
Uh, no, there is not.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar as provided? All right, we have a motion from Director Carson Cunningham. A second. And a second from Director Hudson. All right, we'll go ahead and, this one always trips me. If, is there a motion to, well, we have the motion. To approve the consent calendar, please raise your, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous. How'd I do, Rebecca? Did I get it? Okay. All right. So now we're, we're down to information and standard reports. Everything that's here is informational and is provided on the packets. Anything you want to raise, Superintendent? I see, I see Dr. West's name on there, but.
We already reviewed the annual report from CIBOC as part of the earlier portions of the meeting, and so if you have additional questions there, we're happy to entertain those. The SIA Financial Audit Report is required as part of the relatively new SIA Annual Reporting Requirements. You might remember about a year ago, you were hearing a lot about braided funds from Dr. West, as she talked about the Integrated Plan, and the, we're now hitting the first year of required reporting related to that. And so your materials include a plate and information about that. I believe she's on the line.
I just saw her.
There she is. And I'm sure she'll be happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Welcome, Dr. West, thanks for joining us. Jump in.
Yeah, you're welcome. The report that's in front of you is, includes the annual financial report. When we brought this to you a couple of months ago, at that time, we mentioned that the financial report was being wrapped up, but we didn't actually have the final official report yet. So we have amended the board plate to include the links to the actual financial report that includes the SIA audit as part of that. It's linked on our website. You or anyone else can review that at will. We just wanted to make sure that we brought this back to you in its complete form, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks for that review. I know we've been working on this for some time, and it's ongoing work and it's an important one, so thank you, Dr. West, for that. I don't believe we have any questions, so we can move over through our board reports at this time. Yeah, anyone who wants to jump in and provide some updates on board-related, community-related, committee assignments? I see Linda nominating Patrick over there. If you're willing, you can say pass and we can come back to you. Don't want to put you on the spot.
I just need some time, too.
Okay, happy to do that. I see Director Inosprese hand up, so jump in.
Happy to, just want to make sure that y'all can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Well, I mostly wanted to share on behalf of CASA of Marion County, it's just that the superhero run is coming back on Sunday, June 2nd, at 11:00 a.m. at the Salem Riverfront Park. Early bird registration is open right now until May 2nd, so you can just, it'll be $35 to sign up for the race, but then if you sign up after May 2nd, then it'll be $45. But you can do a free one-mile fun run for all ages, and there will be a superhero costume contest as well, so support CASA of Marion County and come to a fun event and hopefully dress up as your favorite superhero. They are also taking sponsorships for the event, and I think all that information is with CASA of Marion County, or you can contact the organization directly.
Thank you. Just thinking about the costumes now. All right, anyone else? Director Carson Cunningham, jump in. Unless Patrick's ready.
Thank you. It's been important to me to hear from the community over the past month following the tragedy at Busch Park. I've had a number of conversations and individual meetings with community leaders, youth, and parents to hear concerns, ideas, and to work on the path forward. I continue to be very concerned about the number of guns that are easily accessible to youth and children in our community. This is a problem that we all need to collectively tackle. I think the most important thing for us to do as a community right now is to focus on expanding opportunities for youth who become disengaged and to provide hope and opportunity for involvement in the community. I also had the opportunity to attend the Math 24 competition this past Saturday. There were over 150 kiddos there, fourth and fifth graders, and a bunch of volunteer high schoolers at McKay. It really was an impressive event. I hope that more parents and kids will get involved and compete next, well, the parents don't have to compete, trust me, you don't want to compete against these kids, but that more kids will get involved. It's really a great way to improve your mental math skills, which I'm terrible at, so I was very impressed. The kids get really into it, and a lot of elementary schools participated. This week, Director Hudson and I get to go to the Avid Showcase at McNary, and so I'm sure we'll have much more to report back on next month after we get the opportunity to hear from these awesome students. And I'll just echo again Maria's plug of the CASA of Marion County Fun Run because it is Child Abuse Prevention Month as a former CASA. As a former CASA, I really love that organization and encourage people to get involved in volunteering to support kids who've been victims of child abuse. And then also, since it was in our consent agenda, just want to make sure people see that Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation and the Arab American Heritage Month proclamation in their important topics. We don't want to minimize, of course, and so just want to draw your attention there to those important documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump in and provide a closing report? All right. Linda, jump in.
I'll just be like talking about what's happening at North, because I feel like the North community is one I'm really proud of. And like, it's very welcoming and inviting. So, our leadership is planning like the North's first ever like unified district-wide track and field event. So, it'll be like from other schools in the district. And it's gonna be like a unified track and field event with different events. And we're gonna have food carts and then like a band performing on Saturday, May 11, so you guys should definitely check it out. And then we're also having a talent show with students at our school and clubs. And we're gonna be donating the money back to like our clubs. So, I'm just really excited for all of this because I really like love the North community, and I think it's one that I'm really proud of.
Thank you. Need, need to jot down those dates and make it to some of these. It sounds really fun. Want to jump in, Patrick? All right.
Just really quick, before I share, I do want to share my appreciation for the board choosing to ratify the contract with the union. I believe I speak for all students when I say that disruptions to education hinders our ability to learn. We can definitely agree that this statement is true, given the COVID-19 pandemic and the impact it has had with not only our education, but with our mental health. Having a strike would repeat, would have repeated a similar sentiment with how students felt with distance learning. It would bring back the pandemic trauma that has hurt our students' sense of well-being and belonging. So, again, just to clarify, I wholeheartedly believe that the decision to ratify the contract does take a positive step in the direction of providing an equitable school environment, not just for our teachers and the time they take with planning, grading, and supporting our students, but as well as just for our students' well-being. Going back on the topic of the board report, I guess all I have to share is that IB students at South and as well as North are preparing to take some of the most important exams they will ever take in high school. Of course, after being the exams they take in college. The push towards changing education through our IB programs encourages students to think critically, engage with diverse perspectives, and develop a global mindset. These exams, a culmination of years of rigorous study and intellectual exploration, serves as a benchmark for students' academic achievement and readiness for higher education. Just really quick, the IB curriculum, renowned for interdisciplinary approach and emphasis on inquiry-based learning, equips students with invaluable skills beyond mere memorization. Whether it's delving into complex mathematical equations, analyzing historical events through multiple lenses, or crafting persuasive arguments in essays through both language and literature, IB students are challenged to think creatively and analytically. And just beyond academics, IB students are encouraged to become active participants in their communities, demonstrating leadership, compassion, and the commitment to make a positive impact on the world. Through service projects, extracurricular activities, and global initiatives, they develop a sense of responsibility and empathy that extends far beyond the confines of the classroom. And I'm just done. As these IB students at South High and North High prepare for their exams, they're not just studying to pass a test. They are embracing a philosophy of education that values inquiry, reflection, and lifelong learning. Their journey through the IB program not only prepares them for success in college, but also empowers them to become informed, engaging citizens of a rapidly changing world. And that's all I have to share.
Thank you. Thank you so much to student advisors for your comments and just for staying in this with us. Anyone else? I just want to say thanks to everyone for all the work you do. We keep on keeping on, so it is 8:10, and we'll call this meeting adjourned.